Hi, it's 6:30 and we will call this meeting to order. Westchester Borough Council Work Session, February 20th, 2024. First order of business is to say the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. Thank you Bernie for leading that. Agenda item number three, just want to make sure that you all are aware. Announcing the purpose of the January 16th and the 25th, 2024 Executive Sessions of the Borough Council. On January 16th, we had a discussion of legal issues concerning voting wards and personnel. On January 25th, we had a discussion of police labor contract and personnel issues. With that, I'll go to item number four, comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items not on the agenda.
Daryl Cook, South Wantit Street. Any updates on the street protection fee tax?
I think we are still waiting. I think we're still waiting for the appeal to be heard. Is that correct? Yep.
Thank you. How much better would the borough be if all our employees lived here? Who could be responsible for any cost overruns on the High and Minor Street project? Did anyone get, did everyone get to hear the third chief's comments concerning the Gay Street closure last week? Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. Any other comments by residents? Okay, we'll move on to item number five, interviews for the Westchester Borough Boards and Commissions. First up, we have Anne Skilman for the Historical Commission.
Hello, thank you for, thank you for this opportunity to interview for the Historical Commission. My name is Anne Skilman. I'm a longtime borough resident and a history enthusiast. And I have the fortune to work at the Chester County History Center where I lead walking tours and field trips and help with planning, planning different events. So I think my experience at the History Center is a natural dovetail to working with the Historical Commission. And with that, I leave you with any questions you have for me. Otherwise, thank you very much for this opportunity. I believe in brevity.
I will just say, I've been on a tour with Anne and they're fantastic. So if you guys haven't been on a tour at the Chester County History Center, please check it out because they're really good. And with that, Anne, thank you. There's one vacancy. We'll be voting tomorrow. There's one applicant, so.
Great. Thank you.
Next up, we have Caleb Wolfram for the Westchester Campus Committee.
Hello, everyone. Like I said, my name is Caleb. I'm honored to be here, excited about this. I've been a resident of Westchester since 2014 when I came to the university. I graduated in 2018 with my bachelor's in microbiology. While on campus, I helped start the Resource Pantry that exists today in 2016. So those of you that don't know, it's a place where students and faculty can come if they need food, school supplies, toiletries, and it's expanded so much in the time since that began. When I started, it was just a tiny little room in Lawrence and now it's, you know, many rooms at the basement of Commonwealth Hall. So it's exciting. Also, I'm a Friar, member of the Friar Society, and that's an all-male service organization where we find, you know, young undergraduate men that are a part of Westchester who are involved, awesome to be a part of our society. And we help implement, design various service projects across the university as well as the campus, you know, as well as the town. So that includes hanging up the greens and snow shoveling, raking, Banana Day is a Friar project. So it expands too many, you know, too numerous to really count. But my wife and I bought a house recently and this time last year, I've been fixing it up and now I'm ready to be involved in this community. I love Westchester very much. You know, it's been hard to leave for the couple of months that I had to while we were looking for a house. So I'm excited to be a part of this. Excited. I think we have something really special here in Westchester and I'd like to continue that and be a part of that. Any questions?
I'm glad that you decided to buy in a house in Westchester. What is, what is your address? Where do you live?
I'm at 528 South Adams Street, right across from the daycare center. So in Ward Four.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I also want to say I've been in the Resource Pantry as well at Westchester. That's fantastic that you helped got that up running. I know food insecurity is actually, we don't realize how prevalent it is amongst the students and what have you. So that, thank you for starting that up and working on that.
Yeah.
And with that, we will be making a decision tomorrow night. You do have a little competition. He's right behind you.
Okay.
But thank you for your.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
All right, so we have Woody. Woody Lathbury.
My name is Woody Lathbury or George Lathbury. I go by Woody. I've been a resident of the borough since 1972. And I'm currently the judge of elections for the fourth ward. I worked with Carolyn Camida on the original genesis of the Community Campus Coalition. Worked on it for a number of years, well up until about five years ago. And I'm not entirely sure I was effective, so it may be time for somebody new for the job. I was just, if, if we need somebody, I'm more than willing to do it. So that's, that's what I got. Brevity. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make another comment.
Thank you. So do I understand you, you were on the committee, but you've been off the last five years?
Yes.
Is that what I understand?
We had, during COVID, the committee pretty much fell apart. And while Jordan Norley was the acting mayor, he called me and asked, you know, invited me to a couple of the meetings, but usually with, you know, two or three hours of notice. And I rarely had the time to do that. So that's. That's.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, should I add the person that, okay. So, so there is also one more interview that we might not see on our agenda, Jamie Paxson for the Tree Commission.
Hi, I'm Jamie Paxson. Lifelong, lived in Westchester, 1955. My great-grandfather bought the house I'm in in 1890. Very interested in trees, took a horse pasture and turned it into a forest, if you will, down on Union Street across from Everhard Park. And we, years ago, we started the Friends of Everhard Park, which was to protect some of the trees in the park from devastating sewer line that would come through and wipe out like 12 of those great white oaks in Westchester, in Everhard Park. Just very interested in trees, propagate a lot. Been interested in that all my life and saw the garden tour in Chester County Day. So I'm really interested in the town, in here, love it. Never moved. Thanks.
All right, I think you also are very fortunate that we have one opening and one application. So we will be voting tomorrow, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you guys all for, for your applications and for your interest in supporting the borough. It's really great that you're out there and that you, you come here to support. Thank you. And we'll move on to number six, which is a discussion of a resolution to join an amicus brief with the U.S. Supreme Court in support of reversing a voting rights ruling of the Eighth Circuit Court. And Mayor, I think you have a little bit of flavor on this. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, Sean, do we have any more flavor on this?
Sure. I did discuss this with the borough solicitor. And this would be a resolution that would join the borough in a Friends of the Court brief to the U.S. Supreme Court on an appeal of a voting rights case that was decided in the Eighth Circuit Court in Arkansas. So this is a federal case. I don't know the details of it. Kristin has not done the research on it either. So I do think that prior to council making a decision to join and draft and participate in a Friend of the Court brief in support of the appeal, that we get some information about that. I don't know anything more about the case other than it is a voting rights case.
Does anyone on the dais have any information? I'm just curious how it made it onto the agenda.
It was something that was passed on to me from, from the mayors. From the mayor, from you.
So maybe we should table it until we have more information. Yep. Moving on to number seven, motion to approve a sewer maintenance settlement agreement. Spring Hill Realty and Cambridge Square Shopping Center.
So if council wouldn't mind, the, this is something you have not been briefed on by legal counsel. So what I suggest council do tonight is move this to discussion for tomorrow night. The solicitor will be here. I sent around some information about this in an email, but it was shortly before the meeting. What this basically gets at is, if you all know where La Rancharita is, you know, one of the best Mexican restaurants in town. It's in Cambridge Square Shopping Center and they had a sewer breakage there in late winter of, late, towards the end of last year. The owners of the property responded, repaired it. In the process of doing that, we were not able to ascertain whether that was a borough-owned sewer main or not. And the applicant, the owner of the property made the repairs, incurred the costs. And the settlement agreement was brought to our attention from their attorney to formalize future maintenance of the sewer line because the sewer line did not appear on any of the borough's maps and the sewer line is located in the right-of-way and multiple connections from properties to the north of East Gay Street here connect to it. So it makes a lot of sense for the borough to take responsibility to maintain this going forward. And the agreement also is a, is a negotiated settlement of the costs that were incurred to fix this sewer line that's in the right-of-way. So I suggest that, that's the preamble, that, that's the place setting. I suggest we have a conversation with our solicitor about this tomorrow before council makes a decision.
Okay, we'll have a discussion tomorrow. All right, on item number eight, motion to approve 2024 to 2028 labor contract between Westchester Borough and the Westchester Police Officers Association.
I think members of council have received the draft of labor contract that on Friday. We do have some very minor changes to that that we can go over in an email with you that have to do with some language that was brought up by legal counsel for the union. Nothing major, however, I think we can get this approved without any changes for tomorrow night. If you want to discuss anything more in the contract in detail, I urge you all to use the powers of executive session to do that. You don't have to discuss details of the contract in a, in a public setting. But you do have to vote on the contract in a public setting to ratify it.
All right, is everyone okay voting on this tomorrow night? Yes. All right, okay. All right, we'll vote on it tomorrow night. On number nine, motion to approve employment agreements between the Westchester Borough and the Chief of Police and Lieutenants of the Westchester Police Department.
Yeah, this, this is likewise an employment agreement. That's why there's no attachment on this item. This was circulated to council. These, these employment agreements with our lieutenant and chief mirror current, current and recent past practices with the chief and lieutenants in terms of compensation and benefits. So there's nothing, nothing we're proposing changing about any of that. We are proposing an agreement to memorialize what we, what we do with those employees, just like we do any other salary that we'll employ.
Yes. Consent? All right, item number 10, Julie Dietrich, you are up. Presentation from the Community Campus Committee.
Good evening. We have some great things to report. And first, I'd like to thank all of the members of the committee to include our dear councilperson now, Nicole Simone and councilperson Travis. It was nice to have you there recently as well. So as you know, we report on things that, the achievements, what's in progress and, or process, and then next steps. So some things from our fall 2023 semester. One was, we started the Welcome to the Borough event as part of the university's Welcome Week. And we thought we had great success. We're already planning for the next one. But to be clear, some of the things that we did was partner with the Chester County History Center to do tours. We had a volunteer fair at a line space. We partnered with the fire police and the MS departments by way of helping with recruitment and also engagement with the community. And then we also worked with the Greater Westchester Chamber and the Westchester Bid on working with local businesses. So those are some clear examples. And the university put in about $20,000 in support to help make that happen. The mayor was certainly there as well as Mr. WCU and Rammie. So you can tell we really tried to be intentional about getting students in the downtown. And the main reason was the purpose of the committee, well, one of the main reasons of the committee in getting students more to recognize not only the opportunity but accountability and responsibility as citizens. So we're again looking forward to doing that this fall as well. With the homecoming in the fall, there was improvement there based on comparative data from the last year and years prior. I would, you know, if anyone's interested in specific data, I would connect them with the appropriate university and borough contacts. But that was extremely encouraging, both by word of mouth and also, like I said, the data. The other thing that we've done, you may have noticed, there were Adopt a Block program signs throughout the borough that were, we don't have that program anymore. So we work with Public Works, all of those are gone. But we instituted a new program, Adopt a Spot Program, where we went from one to two cleanups a month with more accountability of the students. There was typically a challenge in getting enough volunteers for hanging up the greens in old-fashioned Christmas parade. We worked to really, again, be deliberate about getting students involved and they filled all the spots that, I shouldn't say they specifically, but they were part of getting all the volunteers needed to run that. We disseminated a survey because we wanted to check ourselves and make sure that we were staying on purpose, that we were fulfilling the, you know, meeting the goals for the priorities, which led to some connections between borough and university representatives as well as the creation of subcommittees. Based on that feedback, we established a repository, a Google folder, so that there are archival documents which will be onboarding of new members. Things in process are working around the points program because clearly housing is integral to the work of the committee. So we're hopeful with a new leader in, in that department that we can make some advances there. One of the other things in process is establishing a community engagement strategy. So clearly laying out what that looks like and specifically focusing on how we can increase resident participation. We're also working on doing a move-out, give-back. We did that last year. And those that might not be familiar, we're partnering with a community warehouse project. I know last year it was about over 300 items that were donated. So coordinating with the borough to make sure citations aren't given out in terms of trash or what have you, but really, again, helping make it a win-win-win, right, in terms of the students, the borough, and then also donating the goods. So looking forward to doing that again. The International Town Gown Association has its annual conference coming up. We actually submitted a proposal through the university to hopefully get accepted, basing it on the Westchester CCC model as a sustainable approach to community and university partnership. And we also, now councilwoman Simone has been, Simone has been very helpful in looking at bike racks. There's been a, a challenge with place to put the bikes. So trying to clean that up, again, donate if bikes are left aside, but also providing an opportunity for those that want to ride and park their bikes to have a place to do so. We know that we have a potential new member coming on board, so we look to that as a next step. A free cycle buy-nothing event that we're looking to do around Earth Day. I did meet with the chief, new chief of police, Chief Lee, and we look forward to making sure that we're partnering with the department as appropriate in moving forward. And then we have identified specifically with the Welcome Back, Keith Karowski, Dave March, and Ramsey Reiner as working with the university group, again, to be expanding on what we did with the Welcome to the Borough event. So it's a good bit to report out, but any questions? And we have a shadowing conversation to be had, Councilman Flynn.
I also wanted to add, they, they had a nice representation from the university for the borough's clean and green cleanup.
Thank you.
So on my way here, there was a whole bunch of college women in the alleyway behind me. And initially I was like, oh no, what's going on? And they all had trash bags and they were cleaning up in the alleyway and around my block. So if that's the adopted spot, it was well timed right before this. So thank you for everything you're doing.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, thank you. And we will move on to the ACT Committee. Item number 11, motion to approve usage of downtown streetlights for Crime Victims Center, Chester County Sexual Assault Awareness Month in April. The committee recommended 3 to 0 to approve. This is for the.
Yeah, these are the teal ribbons that go on the light poles on Gay Street. This campaign's been going on for a number of years and it's across a couple of different townships and we absolutely support the cause.
Any questions from anyone here? We'll put that on consent. Motion to appoint persons to the following boards and commissions. And, and this is, so the Westchester Improvement District, Sheila Vaccaro and Josh Maxwell. Westchester Area Council of Governments, Patrick McCoy. Community Campus Committee, Nicole Shimoni. Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan Steering Committee, Lillian Di Baptist and Lisa Dorsey. And the Library Board, Marissa Tribiani, sorry if I screwed that up, Tribiani. Any questions from anyone on these committees and commissions, boards and commissions? All right, we will put that on consent as well. All right, the Parking Committee, motion to schedule a hearing on March 20th, 2024 for an amendment to Chapter 77 and 104 Parking Program Residential. This has been in the works for a bit. If Ramsey wants to say something.
This is, there was an update to Chapter 77. We had done an amendment to the residential permitting program. This was just a couple of odds and ends of things that we had missed for the residential permitting. And then 104, I had made a mistake and we had removed the private property, so we're putting that back in. We are also amending 10445, which has a couple of handicap parking spaces that were either amended to be removed or there was a request to add one. So we had surveyed the ones to be removed or not in use. The one to be added was at request and they had provided documentation. And then 10467 is the modification of the surface lots. They needed to be updated. They all had the old, if they have kiosks in them, it still referenced old meters. And so this is just an, an updating of that and to clean up the leased spaces. So it's just kind of a spring cleaning of our ordinances. If anyone has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Parking Committee did recommend 3-0 to approve. Any other questions? No? All right, consent. Motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash 001, Modifying Residential Permit Areas.
This is just to remove one, one street which had somehow snuck its way into the permitting area that needs to be removed.
All right, it was recommended 3 to 0. Any question? What street was it?
It was, I think, 9's, it was, the address would be, I think, 9 South, no, I'm not saying that right. It's an apartment, it would actually add an apartment complex on South Brandywine Street. So we need to get that out so it doesn't include that.
The one on Market and South Brandywine, right?
Yes.
Any, any question? All right, consent. All right, Public Works Committee, motion to order two patrol vehicles for the Westchester Police Department at a cost not to exceed $100,000 total for two vehicles.
We had a lengthy discussion on how many police cars the department actually needs because of budgetary restraints. In 2024, we'll be ordering, with consent from council, two police vehicles, which will be hybrids to make sure that we, we stay within our, our promise to, you know, for using, not using fossil fuels as, as much. And Mr. Edwards put in there, based on the verbal quote from the leasing company, the both, both cars not to exceed $100,000. So that, that was that, that one situation.
How many cars does the police department need?
They actually need four. Because the Ford Company didn't open the portal in 2023 for the police to be able to order their police cars in August, which we normally do, and they normally receive them probably February or March. Ford decided they were only going to take orders starting February 1st in 2024. And because of our budgeting, we were only able to put in for two. So, and the police will probably catch up 20, late '24 into '25, hopefully.
How many in total are they shooting for?
Just four. The four will bring them up to what they need, what they currently need. Every year, they'll, they'll swap out a car or two based on mileage and where. So the, the police come to us every year looking to replace a car or two. Oh, the entire force.
Okay.
If I believe correctly, I think we have 22 vehicles that are now, and two of them are broken and waiting for parts to come in. So the, you know, so that, that's the way it works. Also, the, we actually had to make two police cars. Also, the, we actually had to make two police cars into K9, which is something totally different than we've ever had to do before. I think we have one car up and running for K9 right now, and then this year going to next year, we'll have two for K9, in case one breaks down.
Any other questions from anyone else? All right, consent. Number 16, motion to approve renovations to dugouts at Hoops Park, Farley Field, Westchester Baseball League.
Charlie Cooper came and gave a detailed report on what's going on over at the baseball, the adult baseball field over at Hoops Park, and he has told us that in March, the poles will be going up and the netting will be going up in April to meet the deadline for May 1st. So they know that they can't play any baseball there until the poles and netting are up. He also submitted an application to, to take out the wooden dugouts and put our brand-new cinder block dugouts in that area and renovate that both sides of the field. And he has submitted his permits to Building and Housing, and they're waiting for approval on that.
Any questions? No? All right, we're just moving along here, consent. Patrick left me a smooth one for tonight, so far, knock on wood, right? All right, Public Safety. Number 17, motion to approve Resolution Designating Emergency Service Providers.
Yeah, this is standard operating procedure. We do this every year, just approving the fire department, emergency services, and police.
Okay, any questions? No? All right, consent. Motion to approve 2024 Open Air Market Schedule from Friday, May 3rd to Monday, September 30th, weekends only, Friday morning to Monday morning.
Yeah, we, this was sort of a non-event. It's been a big event for the last three or four years, but there seemed to be general consensus that weekends work for both, for retail and residents, and Chief, Chief Lee did raise the concerns around safety, which we have every year and discuss every year, but this was approved 3-0.
All right, looks like no questions. Oh, wait, sorry, Darrell.
Darrell Cook, South Horn Street. Will the borough be receiving any reimbursements for the expenses incurred by those using the street? Thank you.
My, my understanding is that right now, the, it's the indirect economic benefits that the borough receives from closing down these streets and more people coming out and going to the restaurants and things like that. That is what is the, the positive impact to the borough as a whole.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions from anyone?
I just have one question. I know that this was discussed last year in terms of the closure that would be part of this, the actual gate, if you will. I don't know if that has been discussed recently or if that's coming up for another discussion, but I believe we received a grant to install a gate.
Yeah, we are currently designing that, and we expect that to go out to bid sometime in the summer or fall, construction in the fall/winter cycle, so it's in place for next year's open air market. And this would be half of the required gates. There would be gates on the bookends of the downtown area that we typically close, and also two gates on either the east and west side of High Street. And the gate, gate especially on the eastern end, will be a very high-velocity, impact-resistant gate, because that's the one that faces the, where Gay Street turns north at that point. So with those four in place, we'll get half of the gates in place, and then hopefully go and find some more money to do the other four.
Any other questions on? No? All right, we'll put that one on consent. Motion to amend firefighter parking incentive program.
This also, this provides free parking for firefighters. I think there's a list of firefighters at parking meters in the borough. And again, this was approved 3-0. It's just an incentive for volunteer firefighters.
This is something we did last year as well, but this is a slight expansion of that benefit, right, Ramsey? We had a smaller number from, from last year.
Yeah, I believe this added 10 firefighters to each firehouse. I think that was the addition, which I don't, I don't think they actually utilize it that much, so I don't think the give was that much. So I, it seems fine to me. They run into burning buildings, it seems fair.
All right, consent for that one, too? And a thank you to all our firefighters, for sure, because I know we had a couple doozies this past year, too. Number 20, motion to direct the Civil Service Commission to create an eligibility list for the promotion to positions of lieutenant, sergeant, and corporal.
Yep, this was also approved 3-0 with some of the changes in the police force or the police department with the retirement of Chief Moorhead and the promotion of Chief Lee. It leaves some vacancies, so this was approved 3-0.
All right, no questions? All right, consent. Motion to approve Emergency Operations Plan 2024 Update.
Again, 3-0, I think this is standard operating procedure for, you know, each year we approve an emergency operations plan for the borough.
All right, consent. Smart Growth, that's me. All right, motion to approve Environmental Covenant at 301 West Gay Street and Lot Number 6, Hanum Avenue Lot.
And I think this is, and if anyone on council wants to take this, this is something I suggest we have a discussion tomorrow night on, so you understand the details of it. Solicitor will be here tomorrow night.
All right, discussion tomorrow. Number 23, motion to appoint Westchester Borough Zoning Officer. And this, this is a stopgap in between, while Sean is looking for the next officer, there's a consulting company that we can use, and the committee recommended that 3 to 0 to approve that. All right, consent. Motion to approve Change in Westchester Building Code Official. What this was, was to, since Kevin Gore is no longer with the borough, and I, who did we end up putting, it's, Sean, can you remind me who we're putting in there in place?
The building code official will be Paul Edwards. He's our staff building inspector, full-time.
So again, we, it's kind of paperwork. We approved that 3-0. And motion to approve Certificates of Appropriateness. This is for the sign for the, what, for the painting company.
Yeah, property on 25 North Walnut. Now, we, I went back and read this, and the HARB did recommend a conditional approval of this, provided the applicant complies with their bracket recommendation for the sign. If they change any of that, they have to go back to HARB to get their review and approval. So this was a complete review and approval that they've recommended. Now, should the applicant want to change any of that, they will have to go back to HARB. That's what the certificate states.
All right, I have no problems putting this on consent.
I think there were, yeah, yeah, this, I think there were just two minor changes. One was the, the actual sign holder itself that wanted to match the one next door, and then an off-white color for the lettering, which I think is, sounds fine if Harbor approved it, contingent.
Yeah, the, the, the company that wanted to put the sign up had to agree with HARB's bracketing and lettering, and if he decided to agree with it, then he can move forward. And that was the, the way it read, so, but we're not sure whether he's going to agree to it. Because he's not here, or the company's not here to tell us that they're actually going to agree to HARB's conditions. Because if he doesn't agree to HARB's conditions, because he's an artist and he has his own way things should look, he has to go back to HARB, so we don't know what, what the, what the applicant's position's going to be, whether he's going to agree or not to agree, so.
So do we need to wait for a response from the applicant before we consent to it?
I would think that we would approve it as presented with the recommendations from HARB, assuming that that's what the applicant is going to do. The applicant, you know, changes anything, then they're not allowed to proceed until they go back before HARB, is what I understand. So as presented.
I strongly agree with what Lisa's saying, that we should approve this. We should not, if it's written that way, we should approve it that way. This is not, I don't think this is something that we need to drag out any longer.
I'm kind of there, too. We can put it on consent for tomorrow. All right, Finance Committee, Finance and Revenue Committee, motion to approve sale of coin counter on municipal bid.
So this is the, last year we got a new coin counter, and we're looking for permission to take the old one and put it on municipal bid for, to resell.
All right, everybody's nodding. Anybody up? No? Okay, consent. 2023, approve 2023 capital expense reconciliation and allocate year-end cash for 2023 capital expenditures not included in the 2024 budget.
So in the 2023 budget, we had seven projects that were not completed at year-end, and they were not budgeted in the 2024 budget. And we also had one grant, multi-year grant-related project that we did not budget in 2023, but we had expenses that related to that. And we are asking Borough Council to allocate our year-end 2024 cash balances to pay for the invoices that we have for these projects that were not completed in 2023, but we need to pay for in the 2024 budget.
So this was recommended 3-0? Any questions from anyone? All right, consent. Motion to approve the purchasing of the following items, and do you want to go through
Before Barb goes through them, I'd like council to understand, too, that we, as of 3 o'clock today, we had not received a quote from enterprise leasing, so even though that's on your motion to approve for purchasing tonight, that we, I can't approve something we haven't seen. So we got to see it before we approve it, and, and that's on them. They should have provided that by now. So that would be the one amendment to these, these items, unless Barb has another.
Sean, will that go back to the Finance Committee then, again, next month, or how was that?
Yes, that, that would be appropriate.
So $12,100 is to US LCO, which is for 44,000 pounds of DLPAC 1000, which is for phosphorus removal in the wastewater plants. The next purchase is $26,484 to CDW. This is for Barracuda, which is our advanced threat protection. $39,020 is for three purchase orders in the wastewater department. They're for four, excuse me, five pumps and one grinder and control panel. $13,049.50 for Univar Solutions. This is for soda ash in the wastewater department, and soda ash increases the pH of the acidic $17,259.84 to Watch Keep. This is our disaster recovery. This is our first payment. This is a semi-annual request. $18,750 to Motorola Solutions. This is for the police department, and this is for their cloud storage. $11,614.39 to Civic Plus. This is for our website for the hosting and support, and it's a part of a four-year contract. $14,981.89 to Common Sales. This is for a fire department. It's for critical equipment and repair for Engine 52. And then $386,130 to US Municipal. This is for a jetback that is going to be paid among three different funds, Public Works, Wastewater, and the Stream Protection Fund, $130 each.
Any, any questions? Doesn't look like it. All right, so everything except for the enterprise leasing will go on consent for tomorrow. Number 29, motion to approve award of bid to Allen Myers LP for Taylor Run Digestor
Good evening, Sean Mitchell, Wastewater Director. This project was put on the capital projects for the last couple of years was, the prices were very high the last couple of years. Last fall, it was bid twice. The first time it was rejected for too much money. The second time, there was no bidders, so council said we could go after a negotiation with any interested bidders, people, contractors. The low one was Allen Myers for $189,555, and it is a safety thing that has been not done in the last couple of years that needs to be done.
All right, no questions for you? Question? No? Right, Approval of Fire Department Command Vehicle Purchase Order.
So this request is for a total of $337,362. It's for four Chevy Silverado 1500 crew cab trucks, the upfitting and the computers to put in the vehicles.
And the committee recommended 3-0? Any questions? All right, consent. All right, Other Business, approve the December 19th and 20th, 2023, and January 2nd, 2024 Borough Council Meeting Minutes. Approve the December 2023 ACT, Public Works, Public Safety, Smart Growth, and Finance Committee Meeting Minutes. All right, consent. All right, consent. All right, I'm, I'm getting coached over here with support of Bernie just to, what's on consent for tomorrow? Wait. What's on discussion for tomorrow? Motion to approve Sewer Maintenance Settlement Agreement. The interviews, we're going to vote tomorrow on the interviews. We tabled the resolution to join an amicus brief. And I think that was it. So otherwise, we had consent.
One more discussion there, number 22, the Environmental Covenant on 301 West Gay.
Yes, the number 22, you're right, sorry about that. All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned at 7:22.